Want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for September 11, 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, today is Patriot Day or the remembrance of September 11, 2001. Since this is a special day to many of us, those of us that remember that day and where we were on that morning when that, those fateful planes hit the towers. Well, I'm going to ask you tonight, rather than us having someone to do the prayer, I'm going to ask that everyone please stand. We're going to let you say your own prayer in a moment of silence, and after that moment of silence, we will have the pledge of allegiance. So everyone, please stand. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A.V., seated. Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call?
Jim Aberwater, Jeff Phillips, Mike Kush,
Present.
Lee Bogle, Charlotte P., Trey Gooch,
Here.
David Jones, Chip Pinion,
Here.
Marvin Whitworth,
Here.
Jim Thompson,
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. It has been determined. We'll now have approval of our minutes. I believe there was a minutes from July 24th, August 14th, and August 28th of 2023. I will ask that our vice chairman give us information on those minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and those are the correct dates. And I have reviewed those minutes for each of those meetings and found them to be in good order. Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They are approved. Moving now into item five, public comment period. We did not receive any comments by phone, so we'll not be doing comments at this time, at this period. Do remember, though, that on each item tonight, since we are dealing with zoning, there will be a comment period in those individual issues that we'll be dealing with. So anyone here be wanting to make comments dealing with their individual item, we'll be calling that at that time. Moving now into items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. No items have been withdrawn or deferred for tonight's agenda.
Moving now into new business, rezoning, zoning ordinances, amended request. All rezoning, zoning ordinance amendment requests will be considered at the October 12, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the planning commission or the applicant. Moving with item one, Damian Baker, REZ 23015, location 6607 Lebanon Pike. Commissioner is Stephen Piercy in District 2. Size of the site is approximately six acres, approximately 1.25 acres to be rezoned. Tax map 36L, Group B, parcel 5. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, members of the commission and other, everyone else who is here tonight. Hope everyone's doing well. This first application, as you stated, is located along Lebanon Pike. The applicant would like to rezone a little bit over an acre, about an acre and a quarter of the property to commercial services to provide space to build a storage, basically a storage warehouse to store trucks and small office space, as well as outdoor inventory storage area for their luxury restroom, portable restroom business. The applicant currently owns the business, which is located adjacent to the property, where the church is located, at 6817 Lebanon Pike. And this acquisition of this parcel would allow him more space for his business needs. You'll see in your agenda packets that there is a concept plan. As with any concept plan, this is not binding, but should give you an idea of how he plans to develop the property. You can see an 8,000 square foot proposed building, along with parking area, equipment storage, and also a cross connection to his existing property, which is to the north. Access would be along Lebanon Pike. Any new or improved access points would have to be approved through TDOT, as Lebanon Pike is a federal or state, and state road. Of course, any access would have to be shown on an engineered site plan, along with the building, parking areas, landscaping. A type 2 buffer is required between commercially and residentially zoned properties, which would be on the southern and western side. The eastern side is the right way, of course, of Lebanon Pike, so no screening is required there. And to the north would be his existing business, which is already zoned commercially, so no buffering would be required at that time as well. Our performance standards would also apply. This property is located within the Walter Hill Village neighborhood center, and is also along an urban-style corridor, which both anticipate non-residential uses. The property to the north, where his existing business is located, again, is already zoned commercial services, and there is an existing church building to the south. This is just for an expansion of his business. We do feel this is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan and recommend approval. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Mister's? Questions, comments? Not with, okay?
Has staff received any phone calls on this?
I have not personally received any, Ms. P., and I'm not familiar with either, and anyone in my other staff has either.
If not, we'll ask that the applicant, if they would like to come forward at this time, or their representative. Give your name and information.
Zero, Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. My client is back here as well, as well as Mr. John Harney, who represents the church, who is the seller of this property. Doug did a good job. It's really an expansion of his existing business. He's kind of outgrown that facility. He wanted to buy this to construct the new building, to better house his trucks, and enabled him to clean up his yard a little bit, if you will. So he's done very well there, and just needs more space. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Mister's? Matt, can you tell us how long that business has existed? How long has it been there?
So about four years.
Doug, any complaints?
No complaints, I'm aware of.
No more questions? Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll go now into the public comment period. Let me explain this to you, if this is your first time here this evening, how this operates. I will call the session in for public comments. You'll have approximately three minutes, or you will have three minutes, to express your opinion, either for or against, and that's primarily what we're doing. This is not a question and answering time. It's just how you wish to address what you see as problems or what you see as good about it. Now, I do have a timer up here to time you, and when three minutes comes up, I'll tell you that your time is up. We did have a timer that gave you a little warning, but it got to the point where it was warning you all the time. So we had to pull that timer, and now you've got to depend on me and my timer up here. And, but I haven't pulled the plug on anybody yet that much, so you'll be okay. But we'll ask you to come up, give us your name, your address, and where you live, and be sure and stand up here and look to the commissioners out here, so they can see what's going on. So when you, when I call it in session, you'll have an opportunity. You'll come one at a time and come up here. We're now in public comment period on item one. Anyone would like to come forward at this time to speak on this particular piece of property? Evidently, there's no one here to speak on this. We're now out of public comment time in session. So commissioners?
Doug, you do recommend approval on this? Me talk the qualifications.
Yes, sir. We did recommend approval of this application. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this subject to all staff comments.
Second. We have a motion to approve, commissioner Pinion, and we have a second. Commissioner, which one made? Okay, I saw Commissioner Kush, but do, I say Commissioner Whitworth second that. Please call the roll.
Jim Aberwater,
Yes.
Jeff Phillips,
Yes.
Mike Kush,
Yes.
Lee Bogle,
Yes.
Charlotte P.,
Yes.
Trey Gooch,
Yes.
David Jones,
Yes.
Chip Pinion,
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth, Jim Thompson,
Yes.
Pettis Reed,
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Moving now into item two. Abdul Abazhar, REZ 23016, location Zales Road, Commissioner District 21. Commissioner Chantos Arino. Size of lot, or size, is approximately 8.7 acres. Tax map 111, parcel 3601. Existing zoning is residential medium density, RM. Proposed zoning is light industrial. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This application is the result of a zoning enforcement action. The applicant owns the business adjacent to this parcel to the east, which is located at 1456 Mount Herman Road. The applicant's asking for light industrial zoning on the subject property. As you can see from the aerial photographs, and for reasons quite frankly unknowns to staff, the business expanded its vehicle storage business and footprint onto adjacent property somewhere between 2015 and 2016, when you look at some of the older aerial photos. Salvage businesses are classified as scrap operation according to our zoning ordinance. They are allowed by right in heavy industrial, but only by special exception in the light industrial zone. We were not comfortable recommending a heavy industrial zone for this. So the applicant's aware that even if they do get this zoning, it's not going to approve the specific use. They are going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a, another meeting. So just to make sure that this is similar to one we dealt with, not for this property, but one on Flat Rock Road we dealt with within the last few months. Access to this property is going to be through the existing business at Mount Herman Road, as it's, again, currently accessed today. Any new and improved access points would have to be approved through the county's highway department, since it is a county road. It's our understanding that any access will remain unchanged. Of course, engineered site plan would be required, as with any new development. Properties that are zoned light industrial are required to install a type 3 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. That would basically be the properties all around. You can see from the aerial photo that Mike has up, there'd have to be a little bit of work done, as far as any buffering onto adjacent properties. You'll also see that there is a little spillover onto some adjacent property. That particular property is not up for rezoning tonight, so that material is being stored, well, not supposed to be there, quite frankly. So there, again, would have to be some work done for this. And of course, our performance standards would have to apply to this as well. Again, if the property is rezoned, they would have to make application to the BZA for a special exception, as well as submitting landscape plan to show buffering and all that that we talked about. I would like to caution the tenant on the property or the property owner, and I'm not sure, there's a lot of people here, I'm not sure if he's in the audience or not, about any further expansion onto property. Again, we don't know what the situation was that caused this to begin with, but before any future expansion would occur on any adjacent property, if they wanted to do that, they would have to come to us and go through the zoning process first, as opposed to expanding, and then asking for forgiveness after the fact. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Mister's? Doug, you said this, this was a, it was, it come to us because of a complaint?
That's correct. You recall, a few months ago, we dealt with one on Flat Rock Road. This was one of the, we told you at that time that there may be another one or two coming in. This, it was all, it all stemmed from the same complaint.
Do you know how long that salvage yard has been there?
Well, the portion that they expanded into has been there only for about, say, about something between 2015, 2016 is when you see it, so about seven, seven, eight years. Now, the existing business itself, I think, has been there for a considerably longer period of time, but I don't know exactly how long.
Does this, the, the use of this property, which is illegal, are there any fines associated with this at this time?
Not at this time. When we informed the applicant and the owner that this was a problem, they went ahead and took some steps. I think the applicant was actually out of the country for a little while, but when they got back, they made, they made application. Now, if they hadn't have done anything, it could have risen to the level where we would have had to have brought them to court, and then there may have been fines and things charged, but as of right now, I don't believe there's been any.
Commissioner Bogle?
In the effort to be consistent with both properties and any future properties, are they moving forward on the, meeting the buffer requirements on the current LI zoned property or whatever? It looks like they're right up against the property lines on some of those.
Yeah, a lot of that was already grandfathered. There's probably not a whole lot we can do about that. But with the expansion, obviously, this is, this is kind of new territory, so they were correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we're being consistent. So, thank you.
Mister P.
Is the business owner their property owner?
I believe so. Because the applicant, it was actually, the applicant was the property owner, so I think it's the same person.
Other questions, commissioners? Not if the applicant would like to come forward, or a representative of the applicant? Evening. Have your name, address?
Name, Amara Abazhar, representing Abdul Abazhar. Address, 1456 Mount Herman Road. We're trying to rezone this property. We bought the Vills Road property in 2015, and we've been in business at Mount Herman Road since 2004. And we're simply trying to expand to the Vills Road. To Vills Road, just expanding, just growing, and just need more space. So that's simply all.
Excuse me, sir. Any questions for the applicant, anyone? That's fine. Thank you. Now go into our public comment period. If there's anyone that would like to come forward at this time, have comments, please come forward. Have your name and address, please.
Dalton James Vaughn, 335, 335. I've dropped a blank. At the corner of Dr. Marshall Luther King and Minerva Drive. This fellow's saying something about getting a right of way across to Vills Road. Well, now, I own 11 plus or minus acres on Vills Road, which blocks him. He going to get a right of way across me?
You can answer it now.
Sir, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, you own property along Vills Road?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. The only way he could get any kind of an access to that is if you were to give him one, and.
Have one to Mount Herman.
Correct. Yeah, it has a Vills Road address, but it would be accessed through Mount Herman. So, yeah, this is, even if it's rezoned, which, you know, we'll find out tonight, at least for a recommendation, but that, this wouldn't give him right to access your property.
Okay, reason I was asking, they tried to pull that 10 years more or less ago.
I see.
And Tom Hain proved to be wrong. I have no problem with changing.
Thank you, sir. One else?
Hi, my name is Angie Kuka. I live at 903 Murfreesboro Street. I bought the property in 2004. I own a home and 25 acres. This junkyard, which you will see in the yellow, there's one area between me and them and my property. They are overspilling. I had a drone, a person come out yesterday, and had I had enough time, I would have that information for y'all today. They do not obey the rules already that are in place, so it does not make me believe that if we give them any more leniency, that they're going to obey those rules. They do not. When I bought my property, I had me, pest control companies, dogs and cats, that could not get rid of the rats, that when they crush these vehicles and cars, send rats, snakes, and all kind of other environmental terrible chemicals that go into our water. There's caves, they're killing animals, so I am so against this. They tried this, like the gentleman said earlier, they tried, this is the third time they tried this. It is small roads, they can't even get trucks in. Now, most of the streets out there, they don't even have a line down the middle of it, let alone a sidewalk. So when you go by there, it might look pretty today, because they're in trouble, but before that, it did not. They've got junk on the streets. I don't even know how the school bus gets by there. So if anybody wants to give them expansion, y'all might want to come out there and hear how it sounds when they're breaking down the cars. Y'all might want to come see the critters that run across to there. Rutherford County is growing, and it's, everybody's moving out that way. We've tried to take good care of our property, so after years of trying to take care of it, and it's looking better, the last thing we need is more junk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One else?
Hello, my name's Jimmy Hollinsworth. I'm at, I don't know, Family Farm at 725 Double Springs Road. I'm opposed to this, simply on the fact that it's a, a family farm, and this, this new, this new area that they want to, to have rezoned joins my property to the west. And we use, we use the wells there to water the cattle and do a lot of irrigation there. And there's, there's, I just, I just hate to see any more, any more vehicles moved out there because of the, just the sheer number of vehicles there with diesel tanks, gasoline tanks, antifreeze getting into the well water, and the, and the groundwater there. Where they're at now, I have no problem with it, but just the expansion of it encroaches even farther towards the farmland that we have there, so I would, I would be opposed to this. Thank you for your time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Monica Wilder. I own 600 Murfreesboro Street. My dog in this fight is not as big as the previous two, but my neighbor is Angie, and we have a dead end at the end of our street, and I'm just concerned that at some point that that will no longer be our little quiet dead end, that somehow or another, some egress will be given with all of this expansion, so that's the reason why I'm here to oppose.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public comment period. Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, let's go back just a second. Did, did you say that this particular piece of land that currently has these vehicles on it was in violation since 2015?
When you look at the aerial photos, that's when the spillover, somewhere between 2015 and 2016, that's when the spillover started happening with cars being stored there. Yes.
Okay, so since approximately 2015, does that, is it also safe to assume that they have had no TDEC supervision and have applied for no TDEC permits?
That's a que, I don't have a good answer to that question. I don't know if they have or not.
Okay, but it, well, let's, let's go back, then, on the two pieces of property to the right. Those are under a TDEC environmental permit, correct?
Again, I haven't checked that. I would hope that they are. That's not something that we would check in our office. Those businesses have been there for a considerable amount of time, though.
Mike, is there a way to, is there a way to verify that while you're sitting there on the computer?
No, we'd have to reach out to the state on that. We don't oversee junk yards, salvage yards.
So I, I guess I'm going to do this, for the time being. I'm going to assume, since they've snuck over and put cars illegally on that piece of land, I'm going to assume they didn't bother to do a TDEC environmental permit as well? So until somebody can show me that they have, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Have a no motion to deny. Have a second. Commissioner Aberwater, for the discussion. Not, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Jim Aberwater, Jeff Phillips,
Yes.
Mike Kush,
Yes.
Lee Bogle,
Yes.
Charlotte P.,
Yes.
Trey Gooch,
Yes.
David Jones,
Yes.
Chip Pinion,
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth,
Yes.
Jim Thompson,
Yes.
Pettis Reed,
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question, the one that we talked about a couple of months ago, or three months ago, or a month ago, I can't remember. There was some discussion about junk cars being there forever, and it was a concern of some of ours about that happening. I'd like to see some, if, if there is a way that we can put some time limit on remediating those cars. I mean, I don't want to see a car, a junk car on that lot for 30 years. If there's some way that you can put a limit on there to where that has to be remediated, they have to be salvaged and put into scrap metal or something, so that you won't continue to grow these things without having a plan to get rid of them at some point in time. I, I don't know if we can look into that, Doug. I don't know if we, if it's possible that we can put some kind of restriction like that on that, but I'd like for us to take a, to at least examine that and see if it's possible that we can do something like that.
Yes, sir. We can certainly start researching that to see what we can find.
Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doug, is there also, I'd like to expand that even further to where Commissioner Kush was going, is, can we consider making sure that there's certain criteria they have to produce as far as documents from the state saying they are, you know, in, in a proper place with them as far as, you know, all their permits and stuff before we approve?
Yes, sir.
Is that something that we can consider as well?
Yes, sir, I think it is. We could develop, use specific standards for scrap operation that would include possible time limits for material being there. Now, the biggest, the, the state permits, verifying that would be fairly easy, I would think. As far as time limits for number of cars, that might be a little more difficult to enforce, but that's something we can look at to see how other communities have done it in the past. I'm just looking at it from a, you know, a logistics standpoint. You know, obviously, we're not going to be able to be out there on the property every day, you know, tagging vehicles and saying, okay, this one's been here X amount of years, it needs to go, or anything like that, but we can see how other communities handle this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just more making sure from an attorney's perspective that they understand that we've got a checklist of these things that they need to meet before that we approve any type of these applications moving forward, just to try to help aid in making sure the community and the neighborhood surrounding those are properly handled.
Yes, sir. We can certainly look into that.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
One other thing that helped me, I think, if something like this comes up, I heard Mr. Vaughn say, and I would deny this, but just for future, if this comes up, got Vills Road, and it sounds like he must own a strip along Vills Road, where there's no access for this particular site. Is that the way I understood it?
Are you talking about the subject property?
Right.
At some point, there may have been some kind of an access there. I was a little surprised myself when it had a Vills Road address, because, I mean, it looked like, as of right now, the only way to get to it is from Mount Herman. But being that it's an undeveloped property, I mean, if it were to have gotten rezoned, or if it ever gets rezoned in the future, you know, we handle the addressing in our office, we can always change that. But at some point in the past, like you said, there may have been some sort of undocumented access that, you know, was kind of more of what you call like a handshake agreement, something like that.
But the way it looks on paper right now, that particular property is landlocked.
It is. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a. One more follow-up. The people who lodged a complaint and the people who spoke tonight, what can they expect next, as far as the no vote that happened tonight? What can, what can that neighborhood expect?
Well, at this point, all they have with this vote tonight is a Well, at this point, all they have with this vote tonight is a recommendation for denial. If the applicant wishes to push this forward to the county commission next month, they can certainly do that. We'll have conversations with the applicant, the owner of the property, to find out what they're, what they would like to do. If they decide to just abandon the application, at that point, I'll have to work with our co-director, Ms. Bell, and we'll have to work with the property owner on a plan to remediate the property, get those vehicles off of there, unless he wanted to make another zoning application for something like a plan developer, something, I don't know. I mean, there are options. It's not going to be where you're going to start seeing cars removed immediately, you know, starting tomorrow. It's not, it's going to take time. But, but a lot of that will depend on the discussions we have over the next several, several days.
Mr. Chairman, I have a.
Yes, sir.
Request of staff. In your conversation with TDEC, would you try to get some sort of information on their inspections? I find it very concerning, the comments that were made, and I never really thought about it, but oil and antifreeze and that sort of thing, just getting dumped into the soil, that stuff lasts, I don't know, maybe forever. How, what procedures have to be in place to control that and prevent that sort of thing? And do they actually inspect that?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Other comments? If not, we'll move on to item three. NG Elam LLC, it's number REZ 23017, location 2917 2927 Elam Road, Commissioner District 21, Chantos Reno. Size of sites, approximately 11.2 acres. Tax map 126, parcel 32. Existing zoning is Office Professional. Proposed zoning is Employment and Activity Center. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The subject property was zoned in its entirety to Office Professional in 2021. You'll remember that prior to that application coming in, there was a, the southern portion of the property was owned for Office Professional, and they wanted to bring the entire parcel under that particular zoning designation. At the time, their proposed use was going to be a self-storage facility, although the primary use ended up being more boat and RV storage after further discussion, which was not permitted in the Office Professional district. All that being said, a site plan never did make it to the planning commission for consideration on that. The applicant's now proposing to rezone the subject property to the EAC district, which stands for Employment and Activity Center, for trailer parking and a building for maintenance. This would be like, a little similar to site plans approved off Eps Mill Road and Miller Lane. You'll see in your agenda that there is a concept plan. Again, it's not binding, but it gives you an idea of how they would like to move forward. During the pre-application meeting for this request, the applicant's representative asked about applying for the EAC district. This district is typically reserved for the employment and activity character areas identified by the comprehensive plan. However, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that would prohibit its application in other areas that are experiencing a similar style of development, especially considering the, this site, the proximity of it to Interstate 24. So from staff's perspective, we feel this still fits within that particular mold of that kind of development. Access to this property, as you see on the concept plan, would be through a newly constructed extension of a distribution drive. Now, distribution drive is actually a city of Murfreesboro Road. This property is pretty much surrounded on, well, two sides, I guess, by the city limits. You can see that in the green coloring there. That's actually city limits of Murfreesboro. This road is planned to eventually extend to Elam Road, which would provide an additional access point onto Joby Jackson, further from the Interstate 24 interchange. That's its ultimate goal. The city did reach out to me about this. The concept plan, there would have to be a little more discussion on this. I think they have some different ideas as far as how that road is going to transverse the property versus what was shown on the concept plan, but that's not a discussion we have to have resolved tonight because we couldn't require anything anyway. But before site plan approval, that is definitely a discussion we're going to have to have a little more discussion on. Of course, an engineered site plan would be required for any development of the site. The EAC district allows for various buffer types depending on the proposed development. Since what they're proposing falls into more of an industrial classification, we'd be looking at the highest buffer we have, which would be a type three buffer, which would be required adjacent to the single-family zoning and to a type two buffer on the south side, which is a multifamily district down there. So it'd be a little lighter buffer, still fairly significant, but a higher buffer on the, adjacent to the residentially zone properties. This property is located within the general urban area, identified on our comprehensive plan, which does anticipate more dense and non-residential development. And it's also adjacent, as you can see, to industrial developments to the east, as well as a multifamily development to the south. Overall, staff is comfortable with their request as far as what they're proposing. You'll, we'll notice on the concept plan, just one other thing, that we did not want to see any access directly onto Elam Road with any of these trucks. So the concept plan, again, only shows access to that proposed access drive that they would extend through the property. So with that, the applicant's representative is present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman. Mike, can you pull that over our aerial drawing up? Yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that's it. So that distribution drive, the only way out for those, and Ian and Doug, would be through that, straight across out and then back down toward Joby Jackson. Is that correct? Is that the way I see that?
There's a traffic signal down here at Joby Jackson and some farms parkway right here.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Doug. I would not want to see it, be able to access onto Elam and then back because that's, that's a tough way to get out. But I like pushing that back toward the, toward the stoplight, so. And I like the buffering aspect, Doug. I'm glad you mentioned that because that was the first thing that came to my mind, was the buffering aspect of it next to a residential area, so. Thank you.
Ask the applicant or applicant's representative to come forward. Matt Taylor?
Matt Taylor of SEC at 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. Again, Doug did a good job explaining what we were proposing here. Really, this is meant to provide some services to the businesses, really to our east and south. See that as a need, kind of overflow storage for their trucks, or a place that they can get maintenance, oil changed, tire changed, things like that. So we're happy to work on the alignment of distribution drive. We've actually talked to the city of Murfreesboro before we made this application. Just can't get access to sewer. Sewer's all the way around us, but there's a couple of easements to obtain for gravity, and just not able to obtain those right now. So this makes sense to just stay in the county, we felt like. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, commissioners? Not, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Now go into our comment period. Anyone wish to come forward, may do so at this time. Not seeing anyone, comment period is closed. Comments, questions, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, this is for staff, I guess. With no sewer, I'm assuming the building would be on septic system?
Yes, sir.
And there are suitable soils on there? I didn't see it identified on the maps anywhere.
Chairman Whitworth, or Commissioner Whitworth, yes. You don't want that responsibility. We will probably lose a few of these parking spaces, but we have had a soil scientist out there. We've got to determine the flow coming out of this building to really size how much soil, but we do know there's soil out there. So we will have that taken care of before any site plan comes back before this body.
Well, I believe I saw on there, there is a wetland on the northeast corner, west corner, excuse me. I'll get my directions back.
Yes, sir, the northwest, yes, sir.
Northwest does have a wetlands and.
The soils that we had found were in the southeast portion of the property.
Like Cumberland soil, yeah.
So, Matt, this is not a trailer washing facility?
No, sir.
This is just a parking and a maintenance facility?
Yes, sir. I think we'd have a hard time doing that on septic.
Okay.
But.
Well, yeah, let me finish, Lee. And Matt, this may not, may not have this answer. When, when they say trailer parking, what are we really talking about there?
It could be something overnight where, or it could be there for weeks at a time where, say, you know, FedEx is directly northeast, not, I don't know whether they'll use the facility or not, but, you know, maybe they don't have enough spaces on site right now. They may park something over here for a couple of weeks and pay, pay my client for some spaces, things like that.
Okay.
Or it could turn over overnight, something like that.
Yeah, so, so they'll make money with rental of spaces, and then he has a, will have a shop where he can do tires, brakes, things like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What kind of traffic are you expecting? How many, how many trucks in or out each day?
It's generally a pretty low number. You know, it could vary greatly. We, we're not anticipating hundreds. We're thinking that there's, you know, in the 10s to 50. I don't have a great number. I mean, any day, any general day could vary significantly, but it's not a distribution center where you're going to have hundreds of trucks coming or going every day, I will say that. It's much like the facility that we looked at at Mona Road. I think there, we estimated like 25 trucks or something a day. It's very similar to that.
More questions for Mr. Taylor? Not, thank you, sir. Commissioners?
I'd move to approve based on staff's comments, subject staff comments.
Motion approved. Mr. Thompson, second Commissioner Everwater, call the roll.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three has been approved. Moving into item four. Jacob Limkey of our Black Oak Draw LLC, REZ 23018. Location is 156 Pitts Lane and 2528 Last Cassis Pike. Commissioner District Four, Robert P. Jr. Size of site, approximately 7.4 acres, approximately 6.4 acres to be rezoned. Tax map 81, parcels 21 and 24. Existing zoning is residential, medium density. Proposed zoning, commercial services. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, would like to zone 6.4 acres of this property to commercial services. They propose to use the property for commercial development that may have uses such as retail, office, and restaurants. The total size of the property is about 7.4 acres. That additional acre would be sold to an adjacent property owner and combined with it. As with some of these other applications today, you'll see that there is a concept plan within your agenda pack. It's, again, not binding, but it does give you an idea of the direction that they are looking to develop. Access is shown along Last Cassis Pike and East Pitts Lane. Any new or improved access points along Last Cassis Pike would have to be approved by TDOT, as Last Cassis Pike is a state road. We also would like to point out that we relayed concerns with the condition of East Pitts Lane, seeing that proposed access back to East Pitts. If access is going to be provided along this road, we would expect to see improvements as that road is currently not constructed to our current county standards. So any new and improved access points to East Pitts would also have to be approved by the county's highway department. And of course, as with the other applications we've talked about tonight, an engineered site plan would be required for that. A type two buffer is required between commercially and residentially zoned properties. Screening and buffering would be required along all sides except for the right-of-way along Last Cassis Pike and East Pitts Lane. Again, a landscape plan would have to be submitted with the engineered site plan package should this application be approved in our performance standards. Would also have to apply. This, there is other non-residentially zoned property located on the other side of East Pitts Lane, just to the north of this property. It's actually within the city of Murfreesboro. It's zoned commercial fringe, which is similar in, in nature to the county's commercial services, what they're asking for. It's not a apples-to-apples comparison, but of the three commercial zones, commercial services is kind of in the middle, sort of like commercial fringe is kind of one of the middle-of-the-road ones for the city as well. This property is located within the general urban character area, and Last Cassis Pike is also identified as an urban-style corridor. With that, I believe the applicant's representative, I believe Mr. Taylor's going to represent them on this one as well, but with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
One other thing while waiting for questions, I would like to point out, at the beginning, before, prior to the meeting, you all should have received a petition handout. I believe there was enough copies for everyone. We do have an extra copy up here that we'll put in our file if anybody wants to see it, but I just wanted to make note that that was submitted prior to the meeting today.
Chairman? Mr. Whitworth?
As I look at this map on that, that Mike had up there just a second ago, looks like the ingress egress to Last Cassis Pike will be a stagger to Dejarnet Lane. So they'll be coming out a couple of hundred yards north of Dejarnet Lane. So you'll have access, ingress egress, red light, 100 feet away. And does that, do we have traffic study? Is that a safety?
Well, we don't have a traffic study right now because we didn't have a, a better idea of what the uses are. Now, when we see a site plan, if this is approved, again, at that time, we could require a traffic study. And we've made the applicant's representative aware of that, that that is something we would probably more than likely ask for.
I guess my, I guess my real question is, is there, there's no way we can make it come straight across from Dejarnet Lane and use that red light there?
No.
To make it safer for the people.
That property to the south, yeah.
To make it, now, no, well, that's what I'm saying, it, that would, I can't talk, that would say, increase the safety of the people trying to get out on Last Cassis Pike if we could use the red light.
Right. Yes, sir. But at this point, yeah, that, that property to the south is not part of the application. You know, at some point, if that were to develop, maybe we look at cross-connectivity, but at this point, it's just the, that larger property and then the one along Last Cassis Pike that they're asking for.
And, and also that, since Doug has mentioned that it, Last Cassis Pike is a state route, that would be controlled by TDOT, and TDOT does have a driveway entrance manual, which has certain requirements from driveways, from intersections and arterials and collector streets. So they're, they would have to follow all those rules as well.
Kind of an off-the-wall question, but do we expect this to be a high-traffic, high-traffic investment when we start this and we get them, get this up and going?
Well.
Would it be lots of people, or, you know, 10 or 12 a day, or?
Yeah, I think the applicant can probably speak a little more to that. Some of the uses that they were telling us about were probably, I would say, consistent traffic, but without knowing exactly what's going to be there, it's difficult to say just how many trips we can anticipate on any given day.
Other questions, commissioners? Taylor?
Matt Taylor from SEC 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. My client does see this as a kind of a neighborhood services, commercial area. He's had interest from potential tenants such as a small gym, a chiropractor, or a small coffee shop. Each of these are small, local business owners in our county that are looking to expand. Kind of see the east side along Last Cassis being underserved by these services today, and would like to expand here as well. We are fully anticipating a traffic impact study with the site plan. Whenever, whenever that would come about, we'd have a better idea on those tenants at that point. And we do understand the required improvements to Pitts if we were to make that connection there. Our driveway connection out to Last Cassis does comply with the TDOT driveway manual as Mr. Hughes indicated, but we would have to go and get a TDOT driveway application and a permit there. We could stub to the south, as Mr. Demossi said, so that if Dejarnet was ever extended across Last Cassis, that the potential for that interconnection would be there. I do think that's a good idea. So happy to do that.
Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor, does the developer currently? Mr. Taylor, does the developer currently own the property he wants to develop?
No, ma'am. He has a contract subject to zoning, being granted. I believe Mr. Pitts owns both properties right now.
Ms. Chairman? Matt, do we have a neighborhood meeting for this and was it?
We did not have a neighborhood meeting. My client, I think, did talk to several of the neighbors. I was not a part of those, but I do think he talked to several of those. We did not host a neighborhood meeting. If that's something you'd like to see, I'm happy to organize that certainly.
Just looking at this and looking at the folks that have signed in in objection to this and the way this plat looks to me, and I appreciate this plat, this plat does help me.
Yes, sir.
This thing screams for a neighborhood meeting.
Say the...
This screams for a neighborhood meeting to me because of the way this lays in here.
I think we're, you said there was a petition. You know, if I could get a copy of that, or we can just invite the people we would normally invite, plus whoever's on the petition, you know, we're more than happy to organize that and bring that back if there's more interest than what my client realized, I think, so.
Well, what I'm looking at last month, we had a petition that come in and they were folks from all over America that signed that thing. This one's all over Pitts Lane that signed this, a little bit different.
Yep, we're happy to do that. We'd never shy away from that if we need to.
Ms. Chairman, considering these current comments, I assume we still got to go through the process. I mean, there's no rules in place to withdraw and move forward. We still got to go through the process because it does seem pretty obvious we need to take a step back on this.
Well, I mean, this is, yeah, I mean, we did send out notices there'd be a public hearing tonight. I mean, I guess really it's up to the chair at this point, but we did advertise a public hearing for tonight.
I have people that have come here for the public hearing. We'll go through the public hearing.
Got it done with me?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other questions? Go into the public hearing. You've seen the process. All those who wish to come forward at this time, you'll have three minutes, either for Name and address, please.
My name's Steve Wright. My wife and I live at 1540 East Pitts Lane. My wife and her family, they grew up there. That doesn't mean anything, but anyway, I went around and talked to the residents after we realized this actually was going to happen. We weren't really notified. I was called and said to Mr. Pitts, "It's old the land," but nothing else really further happened. But the residents of East Pitts Lane do not want this for the traffic reasons, and I think as long as you see the, if you see the little map here, it's probably pretty obvious why I don't want it. So this kind of surrounds all the property that I have, and this is a residential neighborhood. Everybody that signed this, you know, they bought on for this 40 years ago, 60 years ago, to have a nice little residential neighborhood, just like the people of Garrison Cove, right down the street. And they may be in a subdivision, but they're in a residential area. Well, we feel like we're in a residential area. So I wish y'all would reconsider this. I know it may be go to another meeting, but Aberdeen Circle, Patriot Drive, all of these are examples of areas that don't have a commercial development behind them or something that's going to impact the traffic right behind them. So therefore, and me and Mr. Duke going through, traveling Saturday through the neighborhood after we realized that this was going to take place, talking to all the neighbors, some neighbors didn't get a letter. They had no clue what's going on. I presented a little map to them, showing them, and explaining to them a little bit about what I might know about it, but, and I understand Mr. Taylor says this is going to be low impact, but I know once it turns commercial, who knows what it's going to be? I've been in the construction business for 46 years myself, so I do know what some of these developments turn into after it turns, goes down the road to a different client or a different tenant, or even if the people sell out. I never know who the neighbor's going to be anymore. It's not going to be residential. So it won't be families coming and going in my neighborhood anymore, or Mr. Williams or Mr. Dukes, but we ask that you deny this. Thank you.
You, sir.
Pardon me, I'm a little nervous.
You might want to pull that mic a little closer to you.
I'm nervous. My name is Deborah Williams, better known as Debbie, and I live with my husband Larry at 1580 East Pitts Lane. Unfortunately, my husband couldn't be here tonight, but he did sign the petition before leaving. We firmly oppose this rezoning to commercial property. Larry has practiced veterinary medicine in Rutherford County for 47 years, excuse me, and I'm a retired RN. We have lived at this property for 40 years, and when we moved in, our lot runs right alongside Charlie Pitts, so this directly impacts us. We were never asked if we would go along with it. In fact, we were told it is a done deal. Anyway, we've seen three address changes from a route and a box to Pitts to East Pitts because of growth, and we know Rutherford County is growing, Murfreesboro is growing. Commercial rezoning will negatively affect our quiet rural neighborhood. We don't want to reside next door to a strip mall. Our property, we look over the back lot. It directs, directly affects us, and if I seem upset, I'm upset. We should have been notified, but we weren't. None of us were. Nobody talked to us. Nobody asked if we could go along with this. We have all this traffic. We have Dejarnet just a few hundred feet away with four schools on it. We have Last Cassis Elementary the other direction with the elementary school. We have MTSU students driving 96, commuting. This would just be additional traffic. We like our road the way it is. If the road is widened, it takes our property, our yards. I just am firmly opposed. I think it's a way to make money. I think it's a cheaper way to sell residential so it can become commercial, but the building costs are all the same. So let it be residential. We want to stay residential. Thank you.
I live at 1644 East Pitts Lane. I own 12.33 acres there. I bought it 27 years ago with the intentions of building my forever home there. I've been living there for 26 years. Last Cassis, or East Pitts Lane is a dead-end road. There is 32 residential houses on East Pitts Lane, dead-end 32 houses. I spoke to 30 of those 32 residents on East Pitts Lane. 90% of them knew nothing about the zoning. But as I talked with them, there was not the first person that refused to sign the petition that you have. Every one of them was totally against rezoning the Pitts land. Now, if you go by East Pitts Lane of a morning between 7:30 and 8 o'clock, you've got to turn to the right and go down and cut through to get out on the road. You can't get out there. And we're talking about putting up a possible another red light down at Dejarnet? That wouldn't be 100 feet away from the one that's there. Doesn't make sense. You know, I go out my back door to the barn of morning, and I look across the field and I can see Last Cassis Pike up there. I see rabbits running out in the yard. I see squirrels. I've got deer on my property. I've got turkeys all over the place. I don't want to walk out my back door and see the back of buildings with trash cans and garbage that the people that put up these businesses put in the back of their building whenever they do their cleaning and so forth. Plus, if we come out on East Pitts Lane with a thoroughfare and then try to go out on Last Cassis Pike, it's going to be impossible to get out. We don't want that. None of the residents on East Pitts Lane wants that zone commercial. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 1482 Old Pitts Lane. I'm, I live on the, across the road, you know, somewhat from the Charlie Pitts land that is being discussed. I am not in favor in the rezoning. I want it to remain as it is. I've not been in the area as long as, you know, these dear neighbors of mine have, but I've been where I am for 19 years and love the area. And I guess the two concerns I have, the primary one would be, which has already been talked about, is the traffic. Already, you know, now, because of the growth, and we want some growth, you know, there's positives to growth, you know, but already the traffic on Last Cassis Pike is increasing and we're, and I'm concerned about that. It is difficult to get out in certain times if you want to turn left across the road already. Between the intersections of Compton-Dejarnet, you know, that traffic in there is, can be somewhat dangerous. In the 19 years I've been there, the number of accidents that have actually occurred between those two red lights has increased. And it was just, if I remember correctly, just a little over a year ago, maybe the neighbors can correct me on this, you know, we had a fatality. Yeah, you know, we're just kind of right there, you know, where we're talking about with Old Pitts and East Pitts. So I am not in favor, you know, primarily because of the traffic, you know, and the concerns that goes with that. And I would also be somewhat concerned with somewhat, maybe some environmental issues that may come at play. There is a nice little creek that runs, you know, behind some of our properties, you know, and, you know, so, you know, you start, you know, pouring more asphalt and more concrete and you taking, you know, more of the natural soil away. Naturally, you've got to re-divert that, you know, water flow elsewhere. And so I think there would be some concerns there as well that you may want to consider, but I am not in favor in rezoning. Thank you for your attention.
I live at 2775 Ellis Road, which is on the east end of East Pitts Lane. It's the only road off of East Pitts to the very end. I've lived there for, on and off, for 47 years. That's my whole life, and I oppose the rezoning. If you look at all the surrounding properties, they're all residential. You know, somebody owns them and lives on that property. So I just don't think that would be a good fit for that area. Also, I back everything all the neighbors have said about the traffic and other things. Like I said, again, I oppose, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
I live at 1676 East Pitts Lane. My family and I are some of the newcomers on East Pitts Lane. We've been there for 23 years. I'm going to do a little more than reiterate what's always already been said up here, so I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I just want to say I certainly oppose this. We didn't get notification it was going to happen. We saw the signs and called the commission, and that's how we were notified. And I got to commend my neighbors for, you know, letting everybody know and rallying everybody to the cause, but we really are against this zoning change, and we appreciate your denial of this, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final thing, we kind of enjoy being underserved in Last Cassis, so.
Thank you. Robert P., 4047 Bibbins Hill Road, Reddable, Tennessee. I'm the current county commissioner, District Four. This area's been in my district since I've been a commissioner and know quite a few of the people, know Matt, know Charlie Pitts, consider all of them friends. I told Matt when he called me about this, same thing I told anybody that calls. I don't have a problem what you do or what the citizen does with his property as long as his neighbors don't have a problem with what's going on. Now, unfortunately, the neighbors, as you can see, do have a problem with what's going on, and so do I. However, a few things that were mentioned, traffic, of course, we're going to have traffic and it's going to continue to grow. We all know that, you know, trying to figure out how to get around those type problems, you know, that's what our job is, and it's not easy. It's not fun sometimes. One thing I do want to mention is I've had several instances to be working on this particular area, and the main issues that I've had besides the traffic, which there's been quite a few on that, and the fact that it's a state road and we have trouble working, getting the state to always do what we would like for them to do instead of the county, but there is a serious flooding problem in this area. There was culverts that have been put in that go across the road where the church is. I know Charlie's called me about flooding problems that he's had. That's where I get back to working with the state again. Like I said, there are a lot of issues that haven't been brought up here, but the main thing that I want to talk about for a minute is quality of life. I don't want to be living out in the country, which these guys aren't in the country anymore. When they moved there, they were, but I wouldn't especially want to get up and have a Burger King right behind my house or any other similar type businesses, but I'd ask you to consider the neighbor's request here and deny this. Thank you. One other, I've got a question or two for you guys, and I've heard too many tell me that they were not notified. Now, I remember making a request that we notify anybody within 1,000 feet of a property. Are we sending letters?
Yes, sir.
So these guys should have all sent letters, received letters?
Well, I mean, 1,000 feet may not be, I'm not sure how far, I don't have the map right in front of me of exactly how far that was, but, you know, we do the letters. We also put the signs out, which I did hear one of the neighbors say that they did see the sign, and of course, our agendas and everything are posted on our website, so we followed all of our... all of our notification protocol, including the 1,000 foot.
Well, it, it concerns me when I hear that many say they weren't notified. One other thing that does concern me too, and Matt, I'll go back to you on this, I told you, you need to talk to the citizens out there. Evidently, you didn't do your homework on this one. I understand that. You've been up here, what, four times already tonight, so you're a pretty busy man, but it's important that people know beforehand what's going on. That way Trey and I don't get all these calls saying, "Oh, my God, the sky is falling on me," when actually it may not be, but there's no communication, so please communicate.
Anyone else? Not comment, Peter. It's over. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have great concerns of this just buried right amongst houses, is really not visibility for anything commercial from the road. I mean, you're going to build this building, and nobody knows it's back there but the people that have to look at it and listen to the dumpsters every morning. I just have, I, I just don't see any good reason for it, and therefore I'm, I'm, it's just an inappropriate place for a commercial, and I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Motion to make a deny.
I second that as well, just based on traffic flow. A few weeks back, I went to Smithville, and I made a comment to the chair. I would have quit talking about the traffic on Highway 99 after going out to Smithville. It went past Las Casas. It's a mess. And the citizens here are telling you this is not something that they want. I also think it's very important that we understand that when we say something's a done deal out there in public, it's not necessarily a done deal, because it's why we have a process in place.
A motion to deny, and a second. Further discussion? Anderson, are here.
Chairman, I'm going to withdraw for potential conflict of interest vote.
Follow the roll.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Has been denied. Moving on to item five. Scott Wilson, REZ 23019, location 7778 Highway 99. Commissioner, that's me. Size of site, approximately 1.7 acres. Tax math 138, parcel 2.02. Existing zoning, residential medium density. Proposed zoning, commercial general. Mr. Demasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant would like to rezon this property, as you stated, to commercial general for a boat and RV storage facility. This use is classified as automotive parking in our zoning ordinance, and similar to some of the other applications we've looked at tonight, if this zoning is approved, that does not approve the use. The use is only allowed by special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the applicant has been made aware of that. You do find a concept plan with your agenda packets. What you'll see is the existing house on the property probably being used as an office, with the area behind the house being utilized for boat and RV storage. Access to this property is along Highway 99, and any new and improved access points would have to be approved through T.D.O., as we've discussed on other occasions tonight. Staff did pass on concerns to the applicant about the ability of larger vehicles or vehicles that were towing trailers being able to maneuver around the property without having to back out onto Highway 99. This is the case especially as you look at the front of the property where it narrows, it's more narrow, and it gets wider as the property transverses to the, to the rear there. Of course, if this is approved, any development would have to be approved through the use of a site plan, which would be submitted to our office. Type 2 buffer is required between commercially and residentially zoned property. Screening and buffering would be required on the north, east, and west sides. However, on the west side, you'd only need a type 1 buffer, because that property is zoned office professional. There is a, a small medical clinic located on that property that was rezoned several years back. Again, the property is zoned for office professional use, and our performance standards would also apply. We did inform the applicant during our pre-application meeting that we did have concerns about CG being an appropriate zoning for this area. There are other, and you can see the zoning map that Mike just brought up, you can see that there are other non-residentially zoned property in the area. Again, it's adjacent to office professional. A little further down the road, you've got institutional, that's the post office, and then you've got some commercial neighborhood and some commercial services as well. Commercial service is actually on both sides of the road. However, this would be the first commercial general zoning allowed should this application be approved. One of our biggest concerns really is this, the range of uses allowed in the CG zone. Automotive parking, as we stated, is not allowed by right. It would have to be approved through the Board of Zoning Appeals, but pretty much all the other type of commercial uses would be allowed in that district. So we did not make a recommendation one way or the other on this particular application. With that, I believe Mr. Taylor is continuing his night of Matt, night of Matt Taylor for this application, so we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Doug, that clinic that we approved several years ago, I know there was a lot of talk about the drainage through there and the other side of 99 and some cross culverts. Can you, can you or Mr. Hughes tell me if that's functioning the way we intended, and there's no issues going on with that?
I'll, I'll let Mike speak to the specifics. I will say just a couple of things. First of all, that there is a, a letter on your iPads from one of the neighboring property owners, and when I spoke to her on the phone, she actually made mention of the, her concerns with the office professional zone and said that everything appears to be functioning pretty well, but I'll let Mike address the particulars behind that.
Thank you, Douglas. If you're asking about the box culvert under 99, I believe it drains about a half square mile of drainage area, and I can try to bring that up, show you what the drainage basin looks like. Bear with me just a second. So it would be kind of this ridge line, this area here kind of drains through, crosses over Salem View, and then it crosses right here on 99. And I'll turn on hydro lines. These are the drain paths. So there's a drainage culvert under Salem View, and then also one under, box culvert under 99. It is not in a FEMA flood zone. This drains to, continues to drain to the north, Rock, let's see, Rockview Meadows, and then into a large sinkhole. So it's, that's about it in a nutshell.
Since the clinic has been in place, though, we haven't had any complaints upstream of that or any issues to, to resolve. I know if, if this gets approved and moves forward, we're putting more asphalt in or more area, that that water's going to run off faster. I don't want to create more of a problem if there is inclination to, to have a, to have an issue there.
Yes, sir. No, they were required to establish their own stormwater management area. They created a pond back here that collected the runoff from their parking lot and the roof of the clinic, and then drained it into this pond, and held it back for time, and then, then released it into this drain. There's the box culvert, 99.
And it looks like they proposed to maintain the stream buffers and all that that would be required as well, so.
Yes, sir.
I did have another concern, which is, it's more site plan issue, was about the turning template of what size trailers would be going into that location, so we can address that later. Thank you.
Right, and that's for site, if it gets a site plan approval, that'd be something we'd ask for anyway.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, is the existing house proposed to stay?
I believe that's the case, and Mr. Taylor's nodding his head in affirmative, I guess.
And commercial general's the only thing that this fits into? I was looking back at your notes, there's no other?
Well, as far as the commercial, yeah, if they wanted to go for commercial gen, or services or commercial neighborhood, it wouldn't even be allowed in that district.
Doug, did you get any calls on this?
Yes, ma'am, we did, especially one that, there's one that couldn't be here tonight, and that letter that's on your iPad was from, from her.
Mr. Chairman, your thoughts, since this is your district?
Chairman, I really don't like to do that. It sort of directs your, your thoughts if I'm, I'd rather back off from that. I just don't, as chairman, I'd rather not do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak up then. My big concern is, is if we're going to park stuff there, and it's going to have to be done by special exception, if that is denied, then we, by putting this as commercial general, we've opened up a total different animal for this community.
And yes.
There's a lot of things that could go in if they decide not to put this in.
That is correct. Basically, anything that would be allowed in the zoning ordinance under the commercial general zone would be allowed at that point.
And it becomes a much wider open, or more wide open, whatever the correct English, I didn't do well in English, but it just opens up a lot of things that we in the neighborhood
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This looks, you know, a little similar to what we just had prior, and you have a commercial spot right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, although there is OP to the south of that, that is not really obtrusive. And I'm just really concerned about the turning and the, the narrowness of this lot to put boats and trailers. Our last meeting, we had a boat and trailer facility that was more inclined for approval because of its location, and it was across the street from the majority of that residential neighborhood in a, in a piece of land that couldn't have been developed residential. This looks like a nice piece of property right here, but I, I just have real concerns about, much to what Marvin has said, is this could be anything right in the middle of
More questions? Mr. Taylor, come forward.
Matt Taylor of SEC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard. You know, my client is an architect by trade. Him and his wife enjoyed traveling in RVs, and so that's really where this idea came from. See this as part of their retirement plan. They would run and operate this facility at that time. Does sound like there's some overarching concerns on some turning and just if you're opening Pandora's Box with the CG. We have checked the turning template, so I can, I could, I could show you those with the site plan. I can't solve the CG. I think what I could, me and my client could propose is that we, you know, if the board is comfortable with this use, that we could bring a PUD back that specifically limits the use to just what we're proposing here. You know, that's the only thing that he wants to use this for, and we would have that ability inside the PUD to limit that to this. And with that PUD, we could show you that it, you know, the boats turn. You know, obviously, some RVs couldn't fit in the front, the front few spaces. We identify that. My client identifies that, but he's looking for a wide variety of users here, so not every space has to fit every RV or boat that would come in here, so. Obviously, you know, if that, if the use, if this use is the concern, we wouldn't waste your time or our efforts with a PUD, but if that would alleviate those concerns of what else could come here, then we could, we could revise our, or withdraw this application. However, Doug tells us to do that administratively, to bring back this plan inside of a PUD document.
Questions?
And I would say, you know, these are fairly low, you know, people tend to park them, and, you know, they'll come, depending who it is, somebody like Mr. Thompson probably uses his a lot more than other people, but a lot of times, these just get left there and are only taken out a couple of times a year, so they tend to be very low traffic generators, much like, much, much like self-storage facilities is what we see.
Matt, is this, is this like a parking lot, or is it covered?
These are not covered. They are uncovered spaces. You know, my client may, if we were to bring a PUD back, we may, we'd probably put in the flexibility that he could potentially cover these in the future if he sees the market demanding that. Right now, they are proposed to be uncovered, though.
On a few of the locations like this that we've seen in the county, will there be provisions made for leaking fluids and things like that? I know that's something that's been a concern of the residents and neighbors, especially that close to a stream area.
Yes, sir. We could, especially with a PUD document, we could write in there that, you know, we would have the ability to, you know, my client doesn't want any of that. He, he would hold his tenants accountable in, in instances like that.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, would you go back to the little red house, white house with a red top? All right, again, I'm pretty familiar with this property. I hope, just hold it right there. If you notice, the house is sitting on the highest part of this property, and everything slopes back from it down to the stream that comes under Highway 99 and goes on down to Rockwell Meadows. Mr. Taylor, will that have to be, and Mike, will that have to be elevated in order to do this, and how are we going to do that, and without putting undue harm to the neighbors that live around that? Because...
To answer your question, yes, sir. The, the back of the property especially would need at least a couple of feet of fill back there, and so we've got our detention pond planned back there, which would be in the low area of the property to limit the amount of fill, but then it would also be designed to capture our stormwater runoff and anything that's running on to us. There's some that runs on to us from the OT, OP parcel there. We would have to capture and manage that so that we don't harm anybody downstream or upstream, for that matter, from our property.
But to continue on, what we typically ask for at driveways and intersections is a landing, a flat-ish spot, so you're not on a steep incline trying to climb out with the RV or something like that, but, but we could, you know, blend that into the rest of the site. Matt would definitely address that on site plan review.
Absolutely. We would, especially this site, would be cognizant of that flat spot because of what we know is going to come in and out of here. Don't want them to be on a steep grade.
Mr. Taylor, can I ask you, are you talking about, I see the numbers on that plat there, are you talking about 40 units?
Yes, sir. We've got, I think one side has 21, and one side has 19, and then they vary. At the very back, we have them at their deepest, 50 feet deep, and up toward the front, I believe they're about 35 to 40 feet deep.
Forty uncovered units there.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor, you can't see from the photo up there, but on our pads, it seems like there, there's a house right next to the property line being zoned, if you look at your pad. Do they own that property?
No, no, ma'am. Our, my client has the property that's here tonight under contract. They do not, to my knowledge, they do not own the property to the east, and I don't think it's who we have the property under contract from. I think that is a separate, separate owner.
That, that home is very close, or that building's property line.
I, I see that outline, that structure there. I don't disagree. We've actually got, we'd probably use a fence. We actually show a fence on the concept plan through that portion of the property. portion of the property. Actually, all along the... These, we've got fences proposed.
Mr. Kush.
I'm scanning the letter that the individual that lives next door, apparently. Is that right, Doug?
They live in... Well, a portion of their property does abut the subject property. They also abut the office... The little medical clinic right there. Mike can kind of show you where that back property line is to the... Yeah, right there.
All right. What... And this is a little confusing. There's something... A question about the property line being 120 feet from the boundary of this property? Does that make sense?
I'm pulling up the letter as we speak. Okay.
Something about when using the scale provided in staff's reporting, you will notice that the structure located on 7850 Highway 99 of our property is located approximately 120 feet from the property boundary. The SEC concept plan does not show the structure designated as 7850, given an inaccurate depiction of the proximity. And then her other concern is about lighting. I mean, she's... I mean, granted, look how close that house is to the property. Concerned about having an evening full of high-rise lighting in the parking lot. So how would you address that, Matt?
We would submit a photometric plan. If you go back to the aerial, there's extensive vegetation between us and her because of the stream buffer that Mr. Bogle mentioned earlier. In addition to that, you know, all of our lighting will be, you know, roughly 60 feet inside the property at the closest because of the stream buffer, and then it's going to be limited in nature, so we can't be glaring on our property owner. So our light can intrude on our property owner, so we would show that through a photometric plan at the site plan level. I'd actually venture to say that if she's got a floodlight or something like that, it would intrude on our property more than what ours would, because they tend to be more uncontrolled.
I will answer. Mike, you see the shed there? If you'll... It looks like a shed from... You see the pond, the building just up from it? Go up above.
Yeah, it looks like a little white building kind of towards the trees.
Someone lives there. Her father lives there.
Okay. You talk about in the tree line there?
This right here. There's grudges, but he lives there.
Okay. Gotcha.
That's also a house.
Back to the street. Yeah, 7850.
She lives... The family... She lives there, then her father lives back there is what...
Yeah, they got approved for an accessory dwelling unit in that structure. Sorry?
Other questions for Mr. Taylor? Not? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll open it up for public comment. Anyone like to come forward this time? Evening. Mike will pull that down for you.
All right. I'm Cindy Letson. I have the property next door to the property that's being mentioned. I really don't have a problem with it. I understand that 99 is going to be growing. It's already growing, and I understand that things are going to happen, but I don't have a problem with it, and I do live in the little house next door to it, so that's mine. And I do have an RV, and I pull it in and out of that driveway once in a while, and it's not that hard to get it out onto 99. So if you have any questions for me, I've been there for about, I don't know, almost 10 years, so I'll be more than happy to answer some questions.
You hit 7776. Is that right? Thank you.
In terms of the request, are you saying you're not opposed to a storage unit, or you're not opposed to the rezoning, which you may not have any control over what goes in?
I'm not opposed to rezoning, and I'm not opposed to the RV parking. I also understand, too, that I've had a lot of people talk to me about that, and I know that there is a need for that in our county, especially with the new subdivisions coming in just up the road.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, comment period is over. Commissioners? Mr. Everwater? Well, I'm pretty familiar with that stretch of road, having driven it a few thousand times, but... And I'm pretty familiar with the properties around it. I know the office professional zoning was pretty controversial when that was approved, and there was an awful lot of engineering that had to be done on that, but that was a fairly low-impact OP. It's a doctor's office, and I'm not... I just can't buy into a long, deep, narrow piece of property buried with a lot of residential around it, having a parking lot full of RVs and that much hard surface. It just kind of concerns me. I just can't support it.
So are you making a motion to deny? Because I will second it if you do. For those reasons, and also, too, I understand the photometric, but really, you're going to just have a giant orange glow out there, although it's not going to be directed at those residential homes. You're still going to have a giant orange glow out there, which is going to be visible from your home, from your deck, from your bedroom, from everywhere else. So I'm going to make a motion to deny.
A motion to deny. We have a second for the discussion.
I'll be abstaining from this vote just for possible conflict.
Secretary called the road.
Tim Everwater? Jeff Phillips? Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogle? Charlotte P.? Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones? Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Tim Thompson? Sorry, I thought that was Marvin. Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Katus Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Has been denied. Moving to item six, Swanson Development LLC, REZ 23020. Location, Bradieville Pike, Commissioner District 21, Chantos Reno. Size of site, approximately 122 acres, approximately 5.1 acres to be rezoned. Tax map 111, parcel 10800. Existing zoning, residential medium density, REM. Proposed zoning, commercial services. Mr. Demasi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The subject property, and it's a fairly large property, was zoned for the Fox Camp Plan development, Fox Camp Retreat Plan development back in 2021. The portion of the property that's under consideration tonight, while part of that overall parent tract, was not included with the PUD zoning, so it remains zoned residential medium density. The applicant now desires to zone the property commercial services. As we discussed of the three commercial zones, that's kind of the middle-of-the-road zone of the three. The applicant has provided a zoning diagram for reference, but has not... Which has been included with your agenda packets. There have not been any specific uses identified at this point, so there's not a concept plan beyond what was included with the applicant's application. Access to the property can either be along Bradieville Pike or within the internal road network of Fox Camp Retreat. The original traffic study for Fox Camp Retreat has not been updated, however. Staff can approve or require one to be submitted should this application be approved, when a more definitive analysis has been done as far as the uses that would be involved. Any new or improved access points along, excuse me, Bradieville Pike would have to be approved through TDOT, as this is a state road, State Road 99. Any connections onto the internal network, of course, would have to be approved by the Rutherford County Highway Department, and as with the other applications we discussed tonight, an engineered site plan would be required for that, as well as the landscape buffering, which would be required between commercially and residential zone of the property. You can see that the majority of the property borders the single-family element of Fox Camp Retreat. There is a townhome element, which is located across the main drive into the development, so there wouldn't necessarily be any buffering along the rights-of-way that would be required, and our performance standards would also apply. Truthfully, we did have mixed feelings about this application. Having a commercial area composed of retail shops or personal services would preclude residents in the area from having to drive several miles into Murfreesboro for those same services. However, this would be the first property to be zoned non-residentially along Bradieville Pike in this area, so we did remain neutral on this request. The applicant is present, and will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Masters, questions for staff? Mr. Pete?
How far away is the next commercial zone property?
It's... If you're just traveling straight along Bradieville Pike... Mike, yeah, you ought to zoom in a little bit. I want to say it's actually within the city limits of Murfreesboro. Now, there is... There are some religious uses there when you get a little closer to Veal's Road in that area, but as far as any commercial zones, you know, it's... I think you have to actually go into the city in that area. I'm not even sure that's even zone commercial right there, so it's a good little jaunt. You do see, again, now as the crow flies, if you're looking at Veal's Road, Mount Harmon, you do see some industrial zone properties. Now, of course, one of those is the one we were talking about, or at least, yeah, where Mike's got it on the map. That was one of the properties we considered earlier, so there are some existing businesses up in that area, but strictly along Bradieville Pike, there's not a whole lot of commercial zoning there.
Doug, are there any... Is there anybody living in that... The PUD yet, and how far along in construction is that?
There's no been... And there's not been any houses constructed yet, and Mike, as far as the...
We've had the preconstruction meeting, but I don't believe that they've actually started construction.
Other questions?
Doug, I can remember out Franklin Road, there used to be no development out there. Now, we've got Kroger and Publix and all kinds of stuff out there. Doesn't... You don't have to be a genius to foresee something like that happening at some point in time in other parts of the county out Bradieville Highway, so it's not... It's not out of the... It's not out of reason for something like this to go into a P... Inside of a PUD to help service that area as far as coming in. I think those comments were kind of right on, so this area, to me, may be kind of semi-sort of prime for that type of thing to begin to happen out there, and I'm assuming that's kind of what you guys were saying it would be. It could be a convenient process for the neighbors in that area instead of driving.
Yes, I think you're right. That's kind of where I was leading with my comments. Of course, you know, with just being five acres, I mean, we're not talking about, you know, a large regional draw here. What we're talking about are probably smaller businesses that would service the area. You're not going to get somebody, you know, from the Last Castis area drive all the way down here when they probably have that around their area. I guess is kind of what I was getting at, but I think your comments reflect what kind of our thoughts were as well.
Mr. Taylor?
Matt Taylor from SEC. Commissioner Phillips, you're exactly right. You know, we're seeing these more as neighborhood services. While Mr. Swanson doesn't have a specific tenant today, he would be building these. We've looked at a couple of different concepts. We're probably looking at two or three different buildings here. We do intend for our access to come off of the new subdivision road. We're installing some roadway improvements with that, so we'd like to utilize those rather than constructing new, so that has been our intention here. This part... This piece of the project was always envisioned to be commercial. I really don't remember why we didn't include it to begin with, but it was definitely part of the conversation as we were planning this area. That's why it got carved out like it did. So myself or Mr. Swanson, or members of his family are here, if we can answer other questions.
Could you give us a target businesses that you want?
You know, so, you know, if you've driven around town, seen some of Mr. Swanson's buildings that would fit a property this size, they can vary greatly. I think down the road from me, he's got like a roofing contractor that's in there that, you know, may not have any trucks there during the day, or it could be, you know, an ATV repair shop, or it could be a small restaurant. I will say restaurants will be limited here because of our soils. That will limit how much of a restaurant we can have, so anything like that. I think it's a various sundry, very much a neighborhood draw, though. We do see that the area has changed with this project, as well as the Carter's Retreat, I think it is. It's on the opposite side of Bradieville Pike. It's a city project, but between those two, I think those will change this drastically, as well as there's some development going on on Veal's Road not too far from here that would benefit for some commercial-type zones. And I think Doug is correct. The closest commercial zoning is at the intersection of Bradieville and Rutherford Pike, and I think it's slated to be a C-store gas station.
It's vacant right now, but it is commercial zoned.
Looking at that, I'd kind of agree with you, Commissioner Phillips, in what we went through a few minutes ago. Looks like the Swanson family's way out there on this. They're planning ahead. You let a few of those lots get sold, then they're going to have a mess. If people know going in, this is what this is going to look like, that's a powerful planning tool to me.
Other questions for Mr. Taylor? No, thank you, Matt. All right. We'll open up now for public comments. Anyone here wishes to come forward and speak? Evening, sir.
Go Swanson, 1188 Park Avenue. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioners, and staff. This is a forward-moving play. What I would envision in this area are service-oriented, and I'll give you a couple of what my family and I have discussed. Daycare, small church, we leased several churches, some animal services, veterinarian, commercial construction offices like plumbers, electricians, HVAC, where they come in the morning, they leave in the evening. Some type of amusement would be possible, like an arcade or... Some type of amusement would be possible, like an arcade or even a, was it paintball-type laser tag. Some food and beverage, it'll be limited by the soils, as Matt had alluded to. Dance studios, karate, dog training, we have a couple of those. Urgent care, and of course, the beer and tobacco shop, you know, they're everywhere. Our family's been doing this for better than 55 years here in Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. I have three of my next generation here with me tonight, a son-in-law, a niece, and my son, Joe. They're all involved with me in the business, and they participate in our plans and what we do, and they're involved with us at every step. We will be entering off of Bradie, not off of Bradieville, but into our subdivision. We'll have a separate access. We know the buffering, we understand that. Some of this 5.12 is taken up by soils, so we'll be utilizing those. And the services that we would provide in these commercial buildings will be, I don't want to say limited, but controlled by the amount of soils and what our soil scientist says we can utilize by GPM gallons per minute. So I'm here for any questions, if you've got any. I hope I covered any loopholes that might be out there. Again, we've got about, well, almost 300,000 square feet of this type space, which is 1,200 to 1,600 feet, and probably close to 80 tenants that we can draw from, that we're used to leasing this small type space to, being the dance studios, the fitness gyms, those types of things. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come forward, Commissioner. Thank you for being here tonight. Mike will pull that down.
Santo Serena, 1987, in the Vansom Dry. You know, three topic mentioned, but number two, number three, and number six, this is number six. They are all in my, in my district, so I'm familiar with the Bradie Pike very well, Veals Road very well, and so as a matter of fact, my daughter just moved to the Singleton Dry, next to the Swanson property. And I also spoke with Mr. Swanson last night briefly, because I'd like to know what should I do, what should I talk about, and I'm so happy to be here and have enjoyed listening to the different ideas and opinions. It looks like, I'm so delighted to hear from Commissioner Phillips mention about the other thing available. When my wife went to visit my daughter, she thought thinking about, well, where's the gas station? We don't have anything around here to walk by, get one from the store. So my, she was thinking, you know, if they have something in here, might be more convenient to the family in that area. As far as the citizen in this area, I have not heard from anyone had any objection toward it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Serena. Anyone else?
I did not plan to get up here and speak this evening, and I also have a great fear of public speaking, but nobody else wanted to do this, so... My name is Erica Salter. I live at 4063 Bradieville Pike, which is directly across from this potential commercial zoning. My husband and I have lived there for about three years now, and there's a lot of fears that come into play whenever you have a commercial property coming right across from your peaceful little farm. We bought this eight-acre farm about three years ago, like I said, and, you know, we were surrounded by fields. We were really happy about the privacy, and now we're surrounded by construction on one side and now construction across from us. And so, of course, whenever you put in a bunch of subdivisions, there's more traffic. There's going to be a lot more people on the road. There's concerns of accidents. I work in auto injury claims, so I have a really big understanding of how the increase in volume of traffic brings a lot of accidents. And so, Lord willing, one day, we're going to also have kids, and I just have a lot of fears around what's going to, what our property is going to look like when I pull out of my driveway. And unfortunately, if we do have kids, they're never going to see, you know, a big, beautiful field across from us, but I'm not 100% opposed to this. I just don't want to pull out of my driveway and see a Dollar General. I don't want to pull out of my driveway and see some business that is, there's about 100 of them in Murfreesboro. You know, it takes me three minutes to drive to Publix. There's really nothing within a short, distant drive from my driveway to anywhere in Murfreesboro that I would need, so, again, I'm not vehemently opposed to this, but it does come with a lot of fears, and so I hope that's taken into consideration, as this will have a great impact on my life and my family's life and my family's future life. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I'm Stephen Leach, I live over at 4208 Bradieville Pike. My wife and I, I as well was now planning on speaking tonight. We kind of came here just to see what was going on, see if we could get an understanding of what was happening to our neighbor. We're at the, we're at the property, five acres right next to this development. When we bought the house eight months ago, you know, we understood. We knew that it was, the property was owned by a developer. We knew that there was a possibility that something was going to go in there. My wife and I were trying to buy a nice little five-acre plot out in the country. It's what we wanted. We were just outside the city limits. We were pretty happy about what we were seeing there. Knowing that the development was coming in, I mean, it's pretty obvious around here that this is what we see. It's growing, the area's getting bigger. We understand that. We understood that there was going to be a residential community going in next door to us, but the thought of a commercial property, something that he can do whatever he wants to with, or that he can sell, and that new tenant can then do whatever they want to with, because now it's commercial, it's kind of the, once you pull the cat out of the bag, you can't go back with it thing. And you may have the best intentions of what's going to go in there today, but, you know, we have a 30-year mortgage, and we want to be in this community for a long time, and we don't need the traffic, we don't need the riffraff who might come in from that project. I don't know what else to say, other than we're vehemently opposed to this.
Thank you, sir. One else? Not, I'm closing the public comment period. Commissioners? Comments, questions, or a motion?
Doug, can we go through for the residents that are here what commercial services includes?
Yes, ma'am, we can. As I said earlier in the meeting, during my introductory comments, we've got three primary commercial zones outside of our special area districts and things. Commercial neighborhood, which is the most restrictive. Commercial services, again, is kind of middle-of-the-road. Commercial general. Commercial services does not allow any residential uses. Commercial services does allow several community facility activities, such as administrative services, that could be like government offices, things like that. Churches, community assembly uses is what we call churches. Small and medium by right, large, which would be anything over 500, would be special exception only. Community education, those could be schools, things like that, cultural recreational resources, excuse me. Essential services, that could be utilities and things like that. Does not allow things like special, or, excuse me, extensive impact facilities or healthcare facilities, that could be like large hospitals, things like that, or institutional care facilities. Minimal impact facilities are allowed by special exception. Personal group care facilities, that could be a daycare. I believe Mr. Swanson talked about that possibility. That could be allowed in that district. No adult entertainment, obviously, would be allowed, but things like animal care, veterinarian, I believe that was mentioned as well. Automotive repair, I mean, it's allowed by, it's allowed by right, and that's not one of the uses that was proposed, but that is there. Commercial, excuse me, consumer repair services, construction sales and services, that would be contractor's office, which were mentioned. Possibility like an arcade, amusement, entertainment services. General retail trade would be allowed. Group assembly, which would be larger type assembly uses over 250, would be allowed only by special exception. Medical offices are allowed. It has transient accommodations on here. That would be like a hotel or something, but this site really isn't big enough or something like that. Undertaking services is allowed as well, as well as agricultural sales and services, but no industrial activities, no residential activities. That's just a very quick overview.
Doug, do you remember when the PUD was approved?
Yes, back in 19, excuse me, 2021.
21. At that time, this piece of property was already carved out with the intention of putting business, some business...
Well, from listening to what Mr. Taylor was saying, it sounds like it was their intention to do that. However, when they applied for the plan development, they just left it out. So it wasn't part of the plan development, it just was residential medium density, just stayed the way that it was. So, you know, regardless of what their intentions were, at least at that time, that's why they're bringing it back now.
But it make, it does make sense that that, that's the reason that it was left out of the development for future commercial development.
Yes.
Makes a certain amount of sense. I don't know what else to do. The plan was put into effect a couple of years ago. I mean, they carved out this piece of property for this type, these type of services to serve the community, and I think that's planning, the type of planning that we are looking for in the future somewhere, now and in the future as well. And I'm not 100% comfortable with this, but I'm much more comfortable with putting this in a particular place that that piece of property was carved out for at some point in time. And I know, probably not in my lifetime, but I know that as we go further outside of the city, that there'll be more and more commercial development in the county. Once again, grocery stores, gas stations, different types of drugstores, those type of things. So with that being said, I find it appropriate, and I recommend approval with all of staff comments.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second. Commissioner Jones, further discussion. Have Secretary call the roll.
Tim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yeah.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Excuse me. Charlotte P. Trey Gooch? Yes.
David Jones?
Yeah.
Chip Pinion? Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Headus Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number six has been approved, REZ 23020. Old business? Mr. Demossi?
Nothing under old business, Mr. Chairman, but we do have just a brief staff report. I just wanted to just bring to the Planning Commission's attention the upcoming Steering Committee meeting for Plan Rutherford will be September the 21st. That'll be in the Human Resources Training Room on, I think it's 303 Norchurch Street. That'll be at 2:00 in the afternoon till about 4:00-ish is what we're looking at. We're also almost ready to announce all four of the community meetings that we'll be having. We've got two of them set, one for the 25th, one for October the 4th, and then we've got two others we're still working on, so just be on the lookout for that. We'll send out an email to everybody, and we have those nailed down. So that's all I have.
Okay. Mind everybody, all rezoning, zoning ordinances amended, request it will be considered at the October 12, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission. Also, our next Planning Commission meeting will be at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, September the 25th, 2023, in this building, right here in this room. Any other business? If not, we are adjourned.